First of all, I'd like to say a happy, um, good evening, good morning, good afternoon to all of my many friends, also to my many enemies. Once again, this is another episode of Roosevelt Sounds Off. And tonight, I'm coming to you from my smartphone. The reason how come is because I actually have a video to play for you whenever you happen to be watching this particular video. It was a community meeting that I took part in and went to go cover that took place at the St. Sabina's Catholic Church located on the Aubham-Gresham area of the southwest side of Chicago, pastored by Father Michael Flager. And basically, um, people, it was people in the community come, coming together to talk about the upcoming Jason Van Dyke trial. Now, for many of y'all who don't know, Jason Van Dyke is a Chicago police officer, or should I say, was a Chicago police officer, who shot an unarmed black man, um, well, seventeen-year-old named Laquan McDonald sixteen times. And even the mayor of this city, Rahm Emanuel, covered it up. And even, it was even covered up by the state's attorney, or former state's attorney, Anita Alvarez, during the election year, just because they wanted Mayor Emanuel to get another term. Because if that video had been released, that this boy had been shot um, right before the election, then Rahm Emanuel might not have got in again as a second term as mayor. So, um, after a couple of years of his attorneys trying to haggle and trying to get his trial moved to another change of venue, which they are still trying, the judge today finally set a court date. And his trial will start on September 5th, um, 2018. And, um, right now, I think that they're still trying to get a change of venue because they're thinking that just because this video was released, and so many people have seen this video, that Jason Van Dyke will not get a fair trial um, here in the city of Chicago, or in the county of Cook. So, um, tonight was a meeting at St. Sabina's Church, basically discussing a contingency plan. In other words, what do we do as a community? How do we move on, um, if Jason Van Dyke is acquitted? What do we do in these kinds of times? You know, when we're seeing, you know, not only us just killing each other, because I can understand black-on-black crime is a major thing. But, I mean, at the same time, I know we do a whole lot of things to ourselves. And I do know that we do need to clean up our own house, I am not denying that. But I feel that it's even worse when people who are sworn to serve and protect you are also hurting, brutalizing, and killing you. Yeah, for many of y'all who don't know, that we had another police involved shooting this past Saturday of a black male. Now, first, they tried to say he was unarmed, but that wasn't really quite true. He was, but, you know, and there's dash, or, um, body cam video and everything of it. But it's just video and no audio, which to me looks suspicious already. And I think it's a whole lot of moving, um, pieces to this whole thing. And we've also had a, um, a police shooting like a week or two ago of a seventeen-year-old who actually survived. And to this very day, they're still holding a seventeen-year-old, and he has not received any counsel. And they're not, and he's supposed, he's still a minor at seventeen. And not, they're not even allowing his mother to come and see him. And I say it on YouTube all the time, like I've been saying it. You know, because, you know, it wasn't, my case wasn't as bad as this. Cause I'm not gonna dare sit up here and say that I had the worst-case scenario, because I know I didn't. But just a little taste of police corruption that I received, to me, was very bad. And, um, you know, I never received any justice. You know, as far as being a victim of police corruption, you know how they lied and, you know, how they even covered up my case. So I can understand how real victims feel who go through this. So, the video that you're about to see is a video, um, that I went on Facebook Live, cause I didn't go on YouTube Live, I went on Facebook Live. And, um, I, you know, saved the footage and everything to my phone. And I broke it up in two parts, because I had the live go out on me about twice. So you're gonna see two parts, um, of it. And, um, hopefully that the audio is okay. I can only, you know, because of the whole seating arrangement, I can only get so far, you know, to sit in the meeting. You know, you're gonna see some other cameras from news agencies blocking me for a minute. Um, but I do get in, you know, as much as I can. And, um, hopefully that you all see and hear, and really listen to certain things that the community is saying about their experience, um, with Chicago police. And what do we need to do as a community to deal with and get over some of this trauma? And some of this anxiousness that we feel in our community? When we have fear of these people in uniform with guns, tasers, and whatever, who just kill with impunity, without even facing any kind of consequence? So, um, stay tuned for this clip. I just decided to just give you my little small intro and everything on it. So the rest that you see will be the clip. And I hope that everybody will take time to hear, and not only hear, but listen. Really, really listen and understand. So, with that said, stay tuned for the clip. And, um, be sure to subscribe to Roosevelt Sounds Off, hit that bell icon. And be sure to give me a thumbs up, I would greatly appreciate it. And, um, hopefully I'll see everybody in the next video. Stay tuned for the clip, and peace and blessings to all. Hello, you all, again, this is Roosevelt. I'm hoping that my live doesn't go out again. This is Roosevelt, hoping a lot, sorry about that, the first time the live went out. Like, I'm, I guess, cause it was a low signal, or whatever it is. Um, so we're about to get started here in a few more minutes. Uh, I'm trying to look. Okay, it's talking about, it's trying to go live, but I guess it's not quite making it. Trying to go live. Okay, it looks like we are live. Good evening again to everybody. My live feed did go out, um, because it was a low, um, connection. Hopefully it's okay now. Uh, cause I have to tap into somebody's wifi, because we are down in the basement, where we don't have too good of a signal. So if it goes out, I'll just try to come back. Okay? So hopefully everybody out there is doing good, and everybody will watch and share this live. See, it's one person watching me, good evening. I'm coming live here from St. Sabina's Church on the southwest side of Chicago. Please share and watch. We're about to get started here in the next few minutes or so. Let you see everybody who's here. Good evening to all of you all. We're a little bit late or something, but, you know, we're about to get started soon. Waiting on y'all to come on, go on and share. You have to excuse, like, where I'm sitting, cause I'm kinda like right behind somebody. Let me see if I can get out more in the middle here. I got two people watching me, so, okay. Y'all keep sharing this video. You need everybody, especially in the city of Chicago, to watch. Because this issue of police brutality, it affects all of us. Hey, what is going on, Lorna? I see you. I ain't seen you since high school. How have you been? How, hopefully Lorraine is good, and hopefully your parents are good. Hey, Sister Holman? Continue on to share this video, you all. It's important. Cause I mean, you never know, you could be the next victim of police corruption or police brutality. Not trying to wish that on anybody, but it's something that can, and it does happen. We know that. Because it happened to yours truly. And I only got like a little taste of what could happen. Just think of people who actually like get stopped and actually get searched and even shot by police. We should get, be, get ready to get started here soon. I believe Father Michael Flager is over in that direction somewhere over there. So yes, we are here, the St. Sabina's Church, um, on the corner of Seventy-Ninth and Racine, southwest side of Chicago. And I hope that people will watch and will share this video. And tell them that Roosevelt is on air coming live from St. Sabina's. Okay, and here we go, we're about to get started. Let's listen.
God, in the church, help us in the law of justice. Help us to work and thank and pray on us. Help us to plan and work together in a community so that we can not only want justice, but demand justice and break our justice. Create enough supply and role that does not override our wisdom or override our decisions. Help us to take all emotions and anger from persons that we feel and that we don't read. Help us to make the lives so that we can really change the system. We can really dismantle the small team of this world. So that every person is treated with dignity and the respect and the holiness to which they deserve. Help us to listen and talk to each other and admire your information. Just graduate with that, brothers and sisters.
Amen.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Rory Tyler. I'm a community activist from the South Shore. I'm ready for a quick statement for you all coming. Um, so, a little bit about myself. Okay, first, uh, I had, I do an annual annual K dinner. And this was the second time I did it. Um, there's great community members together, just to spiritify the kings and all the peoples and stuff that we all work in in the community. But God put it on our heart this year to, to really put emphasis on the social climate that we were approaching. And that social climate is, uh, is really what kind of happened with, they spoke about Laquan McDonald. And the fact that Jason Van Dyke is going to trial, um, the way he is, was going on on September 5th. It's imperative, as, as we sit here, we have a message of organizers, um, people from the media, um, people that have their own foundations, radio personnel, mental health experts, legal experts, faith-based leaders. It's so important and wonderful about the faith that we all come together and collaboratively, come up with a contingency plan. And if he meant and likely to, that Jason Van Dyke is acquitted. We know if you see in coastal countries, in Baltimore, in cities like Ferguson, what can happen if the community receives a negative response or hold a, um, law enforcement accountable? If you don't get the charges that we want, or you don't get the commission that we want, we've seen what that can do to cities like Baltimore and Ferguson. We all want to find, we want to see, we want to see anything that can tear down a city. We want to see the city, we want to see the city blue. But we want people to come together peacefully. And essentially, it's our personal rights, we will exercise and invoke that right, if necessary. So, I really want to start that conversation at, at the first day that it made. Um, many of you in your world that, and just getting this conversation going. Um, just a little like I said, I was in Maine. Now, we're less than two months away from what has happened for me in my personal life, which has had a pretty good journey. Um, getting to take our first four years of taking, getting to take the lease, and getting the travel day, and now ultimately seeking a position. So, I really wanted to bring like nine people together, who are fighting this question of justice, who believe that we can, we can love somebody and hold them accountable, right? And that's what we need to do. And I think that we need to approach this from a Christian perspective. Um, I can love you and hold you accountable. Um, you might, and also to start bringing reconciliation and healing at that time. We want it to be known and stated from the activists who, that we don't hate all, or we don't hate anybody. We don't hate police. But we do hate injustice. We do hate unconstitutional immigration policies. And we will stand against that if that happens, as long as we have to carry our wrongs. We will always stand against it, and we will stand on that. This guy has sat in my neighborhood, um, most of you know that I'm from Eastside of South Shore, on, on Seventy-first Street. A gentleman, a rich economist, uh, was shot and killed by law enforcement. Now, many people have their own personal opinion on whether it was justified or not. I'm not into that today. But what I'm here for today is to say that police and, police in my community and our relationship is fragile. It's to the point that we don't even wave at white carers or, or in the street. All we know is that he's, he was shot back there, whether it was justified or not. Cause we've seen what happened to, we've seen what happened to Paul Newell. And we've seen what happened to the economy company. So we know that police officers should be killed on a non-life event, that's no secret. So, with this, with that being said, I just really want us to really go in here and bring our thoughts, um, together. We all have different respective fields, sorry, Fox. Um, I wanted to just bring, um, some people, just people from different perspectives. And so, I think this is important to note here. There was four pillars that I remember us organizing at, at the dinner. The four pillars was, um, I'm feeling a way of saying this out loud, I can't say it very, sorry. But it's all good. Um, the four pillars was radical utilization, peaceful administration, peaceful, sustainable administration, right? Social and policy changes, and then just, um, narrative control. Cause every time that a black man is killed, sometimes there's an era that demonizes this black individual. And we need to make sure that Laquan is not demonized, like so many have been demonized, uh, before at times fast. So, I want us, I want us to bring every people that I, that I respect and love to come and share some ideas of how to, that they can contribute to this. And then we're gonna text a Q and A from the community on what you guys think, um, we should do if Jason Van Dyke is acquitted. At that point, what is justice for the non-life duty? What, what is the issue? Do we go shut down the Black Valley? If we do, how long do we do it? Do we get other centers like the CTA and brother, join up, join up, hunt and fight us? And shut the city down for real? What do we do if, if Jason Van Dyke is acquitted? Also, just equally important, how do we protect our communities? Like the South Shore, that's rare to you out there anymore. How do we ensure that our community don't run, don't run out? That it's peaceful? Even when the police are peaceful, that we are peaceful? And how can we leave that exactly as examples and speech makers? So, I got four people I wanna talk to, have our own respective field, from a faith-based perspective, from a legal perspective, and, um, what we really know. Shining a light on the black community is trauma and mental illness. And that's very important, no one has a right to speak from that perspective. While this trial is, I'm gonna have to take it off. I'm gonna keep it real and be transparent. I know I have trauma, and it took me a long time to say, like, I think I got hit by a TST. And it might, y'all probably hit sixteen, and it doesn't matter at all. But if I hit sixteen, my mind, I would imagine go back to certain things. If I had a, no, my mind, I would imagine going to certain things. So I know me wanting to struggle, I might not be able to watch that videotape all over and over again. And that's important, having to protect yourself is mental wellbeing. And trauma is really with black community. And I wanna address that, and I wanna make sure that we protect our community that was just struggling. Police violence, trauma, police violence, also trauma on the community, right? So that's something we're gonna really emphasize. So I wanna, I'm gonna worry about first, we gotta talk about, from his perspective, how the faith-based community can contribute and what it's in there with, with giving justice for the non-life. And any, any black individual that Jason Van Dyke is acquitted, who we are best approached that, uh, Father Mike, when, um, got to my life, I know.
Maybe real quick, I just think that, uh, I very, very much appreciate Will for helping these meetings that we're doing about the community. Cause we have to do two things, we have to plan. Otherwise, we respond with a hurt in our outreach, in our anger. And we've got a strategy that, we've got to have a plan, and say, what are we gonna do? How are we effective, creating a system that is lawful and unchallenged to change? Um, and secondly, we gotta do it unified. We can't have this works here, 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 and wrong with each other, and not be able to unify, not really effectively, put pressure on the system and force it not only to listen, but force it to make some changes. Um, and we gotta, so I think the faith communities, you know, the churches, the sentiites, and mosques have a real, real important task over these next months. To help educate communities, every church, we have some points of education from a legal perspective. One thing that I was talking about with, um, with a couple of churches we've been at, and I'm, we talked to the men about it. You know, if you, if people have rights to, they're gonna be able to arrest. Unfortunately, they do. And they can do that, then you can find that in court, that somebody can just arrest me, and that is, with no reason at all. But they can do it, and then they can find that in court. Where people have to know what rights we have, and what not to do, and what to do in our circumstances. So we're not continuing to find, um, our young men shut down the street, um, like God, which is what's happening. So, my thing is, the churches that I got in my, with mosques, and we call them that, and open up their doors, have some sessions come in, legal expert, community activists, who can say, what can we do? How do we come together? What's our next move? I've been asked for the last two weeks, after the Dan Ryan, you know, first of all, that knew anything. The purpose of the Dan Ryan shutdown was to tell people to get the attention that we're sick and we're tired of what's going on in the violence in the city. And it showed it was enough, enough, it was a risk, maybe nobody would have showed up, but thousands did show up. But I, I around, say, retired. Now, the next thing was, okay, so now we got your attention, here's the thing that we want, here's the thing that we demand. And then try to strike that out, and what's the next thing we do? How do we get the attention in a stronger way? So, we've got to unite, we've got to educate, um, we've got to come together and bring our forces. Because the system, the system will stand together. They will stand together to fight the community. The community has to come together to show their strength, their support, and how smart the system, when it is unjust. So, please, whatever church has ever got a mosque, he might belong to. Ask that, set some serious, set some serious up, and let them come together. Educate the people of their congregation, and begin the night vote, so we can come together. So we'll plan long before this woman found her case down, has got a date before she comes out. We've got to come together, get some plans, how are we gonna handle it? What are we gonna do? What do we wanna say beforehand? And what do we wanna say to them, what decision is, after? Thank you.
That's my line. So we're calling on, I think I wanna have a message to this. We're really calling on all the faith-based leaders in the city of Chicago. You need to, we need to open up their churches, we need to open up their resources to be part of this fight for justice, this quest for justice, and be part of this contingency planning process. We need all the churches, specifically, particularly in the African-American community, to be more involved. We need you, we need you to participate, we need you to come out. Um, now, there's certain realities around Laquan's case. Um, some people wonder if he was under charge, like, I don't know how many people are familiar with it. We were here, boy, she was shot in 2012 by the officer Dante Servin. Anita Alvarez, um, under, well, undercharged Dante Servin, the officer that shot Saddle, or killed, is really the reason I don't even got his act with, uh, Martinis, uh, boy, uh, Martinez's life. The fact is, is some people think that Laquan's murder was overcharged. Well, firstly, we murdered him in the skin, or with, uh, with Jason Van Dyke. Does the clean, final, um, is that applicable to Jason Van Dyke in this case? And also, what about the sixteen counts of aggravated battery that we're hosting? And in addition to that, what can we do if ultimately, if he's acquitted, knowing that health and justice does exist? Um, what does the US government have assistance? We know that it was a civil rights inquiry, uh, for early charges that we run up, you know? Where is that? And how can we do a petition to do that if he is acquitted too? And other realities that he said, he might wanna share, that might help the black community in this process. So I'm gonna bring it on, turn the camera, if you wanna come on and share some words for the community.
Good evening. It is a great pleasure to be at the test, right? To be standing with Father Michael Flager. A priest who has been in the community with a thirty-five years' fight for justice and trauma. It's also a pleasure to stand with Will. I told him just now before I spoke, and before the programs, uh, Will goes to Boston. And, um, if he goes to Boston, and he can see some of the greater challenges that comes along with fighting for, for the platform. When we talk about Laquan's case, and Jason Van Dyke trial, or something like that, one of the things that's, in my view, is most important to do. One, you must get it in order. I'm telling you now, that when this case go to trial, it will be packed with police officers. There will be so many police officers, they're gonna tell the community that it's not, not a problem for them. Like, Father Flager, if we're able to go to the other activists, and they're shutting down the Dan Ryan, you have to mobilize on the same day, before I was on the day of trial. And you be prepared to be there as long as that trial is going on. It is not only time to say what you're gonna do if he's not with you. Let me share something with you. In the issue of America, you will be hard pressed to find a case where a final black police officer, white white police officer, went to jail for killing a black man. It rarely happens. It's definitely impossible. So if you sit here now, thinking that you're gonna get a guilty verdict, and you might get a guilty verdict, but don't be shocked. Trial practice and practice almost none of the exact same. Jurors are gonna come, and those jurors, most of them are gonna be white. And they're siding with the police officers based on their historical experience. We talk about racism, we talk about in line bias, along those other things. They relate to the police officer. They can't be basically set in the first week. And one of the challenges that we face as a community is not enough of us answer the call to serve on jurors. And I'm talking about black people. We have to be actively serving on jurors. We can't dismiss that jury summons when we get it. And we can't be there when we do get there and say, I can't be fair, my religion won't let me judge people. We can't say that we're judge people, that's nonsense. We have to sit on jurors, and we have to be prepared. The final thing, and I, I would like to say is that, we keep asking the question, what do we do if there is non-commission? We do the same thing that we've been doing. The issue of police brutality, police officers kill the black people, the black community. There are hundreds of thousands of stolen bodies, and it's black people that kill black police officers. One of the worst things we have to do, and we may not be, is we have to value our own lives. We have to be just as outraged at the killing of our people by a police officer as we are about us taking our own lives. We have to be just as vigilant, just as angry, just as pissed off, for lack of a better word, when it happens to us. So my suggestion is simply to continue to organize. It's easy to react, and it is to organize. Be prepared, though, I'm not saying... Be prepared, though I'm not saying hold this, that, or this, that. Be prepared, get involved, keep protesting, for what you're doing, say, agitate, agitate, agitate. But be prepared for that verdict. Don't expect it to necessarily go your way. This system ain't designed to put white people in jail for killing black people. It is not designed to do that. It has never been designed to do that. And unless we get more actively involved, as jurors, as politicians, as community activists, as faith-based community, this is not going to change. This is not going to change.
I have a very quick question. Do you think, we don't do Q and A to you, but I just have a quick question. Do you think we can undercharge, or do you think we can overcharge? And do you think the federal law applies to that statement?
I don't think, I think to talk about overcharge or undercharge is big all the time, and gets you into. The system is not designed to send police officers to jail for killing black people. I'm going to get you charged with murder, or you cause an illicit crime. That undercharge, overcharge was a way for them to justify why they had to be charged. It is going to be difficult. It is going to be difficult for a jury, a primary, a white man, to stand up and say, Winston is also a criminal. In that, what do you mean, let's ask another question. Let's say he is convicted. That don't change what's going on for the black people. If the officer is convicted, that's not for some police officer who shoot and kill the black people. That's going to change when we change. When we make a demand for each other, first and foremost, our lives are valuable. We can have to stop killing each other, and they would, they should have stopped killing us. But, you know, we just have to be prepared to continue this fight. This is a long, this is a long, long, long fight. Five, twenty, five, thirty, forty years, I've been doing it twenty-five years anyway. I mean, this, this fight for equality, protect my life, it's, it was different when you got here, it's going to be here when you die. But we have to change it, we have to keep pressure on the system. And young brothers like you need to go to law school, so you can have this debate, fight out here in the street, fight out in the border. But it's a battle that has to keep going on. I want to ask you a question.
We can open up a Q and A to you, I know some people, I definitely have a community, of what you guys, ideas that you guys have, ideas, um, on contingency planning. Our next speaker, like I said, I definitely want to focus, I want to put a strong emphasis and focus on our mental realness and healing. I have a friend in Brown Day, who actually comes from Chicago, who trusts me, that brought the idea that I wrote, making sure that you gave me six places where people can be. And I believe in trauma counseling, when this trial is, is happening, or leading up to a trial. Because I think what we're seeing on San Francisco Street, was the example of that, is just really a lot of built-up trauma. That was the first time I seen Mr. Busters, like, real long, for the American, he was, he was, he did. That was the long first time I seen everybody, that was the one, 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 that was an accident, right? This might not have shot, whether it's like a community violence, or it's a law enforcement, it wasn't our first time. And it's what you see that so many, so many years, years and years and years of that violence, it does something to you, if you don't make up appropriate help. And I think that community understanding, the black community, this, I like the terminology, um, senseless violence. I understand, like, if I'm open to somebody, and they're going to strike, or shoot you, that's it, that's how you shock them, that's the part of it to me, I get that. But what you don't know, is you don't know what, what that person is doing to you, or they're hurting each other. You understand, it's a lot of trauma, it's a lot of taking time on going to our community, because they don't have the ability to help, uh, treat them that they need. So I want to bring up a special, two specialists, and let you know, and she was talking about how she can contribute, uh, her resources, and us feel set, to make sure that our community is in a good place mentally, to deal with, uh, watching this video over again, with just the issue of police violence on the black community. So y'all, you're in, from here on out.
Hello, everybody, my name is Kenya, I'm from around, I'm from a record signing, this is the foundation. And what we're doing today, we're mainly, and we just try to connect the men, black women, youth, and men to follow the useful services. This contingency plan that we are planning, leading up to the trial of, um, Jason Van Dyke, this Florence McDonald trial, we are done, so are planning therapy for the community. I think as a whole, we are dealing with ongoing trauma as a community. Every week, we see a different shooting, we see a different personality, someone who is in the light of police brutality. And we're dealing with this ongoing, uh, trauma PTSD, um, on top of trauma that we deal with in our everyday lives. So, um, so we're just asking the community today, I'm also asking the community, what type of therapy would you like to see as a whole? Um, will we do some group therapy, will we do some one-on-one therapy? Or what type of therapy would the community like to see? And also allow the community to express, how do you feel? How does it make you feel to know that, you know, the Florence McDonald lost his life and got shot fifteen times? How does that make you feel as a community? If anybody wants to raise their hand and answer, how does that make you feel, how does that make you feel as a black woman? How does that make you feel, anybody that have been, you don't have to raise your hands.
Just all.
Anybody? Anybody else, how does it make you feel? Is scary, your life. Anybody else?
Anxious.
Anxious. I think that the activists, um, when stuff like this happens, where as the police does something, and interrupts the community, it's not fair to us to have to keep the peace, when we just want to express anger. So I just, I feel like it's bad.
You know what, I'm a veteran. And I'm going to tell you the truth. They're the chain of command. These officers are not doing something that they haven't been trained to do. They don't do nothing on their own. So we're blaming the police officers that's on the street, that's being, that have been taught and trained to do what they're doing. It wouldn't be so obvious if it hadn't happened so often. One time, it's isolated incident. Two times could be a coincidence. Three times, there's a problem. Five hundred times, it's ridiculous. They are being trained to do what they're doing. You can't train someone to do something else that's already trained to do what they do. They have already been trained to hate. So if they need better training, it's ridiculous. They don't need better training, they all been trained. They've been trained to hate. Oh, you can't get them to stop hating? That they've been trained to hate. They touch our community with already preconceived notions of us being their enemy.
Amen.
They are dressed to deal with us. So they come into our community with an attitude saying that they are, they're under control, it's our job to control them.
Amen.
That's a problem. You can't hire more bigots to replace the bigots you already have. That's not going to make the situation better, we're going to hire more police, and then dump them off into the black community, to assault our people. And they come in with a pretty notion that we have to keep them animals under control. It's what they do. And they've been doing it for...
Uh, when I look at citizens in a picture, and I operate, it's appropriate.
Amen.
It's appropriate.
Amen.
Also, while we may be mad, but we will be remiss in our responsibility, to say, right now, those officers have been kissed by this guy. The police have put targets on our...
Amen.
They are killing our women and children with impunity. As of right now, and we make a real call, this is the defining moment, uh, police accountability. On this day, this is the final moment, uh, of our civil rights histories. Because what, uh, it's a black people's problem. And as the counselor said, well, we have a criminal justice system. That is not designed to facilitate the need of black people. How can we be conscience-hypistic? They're going to have a, and they're reason, they didn't have to know me. I am not of the opinion, we should not be telegraphed as this father. The black manhood of our community, we, we have been doing our best to put a hedge of protection around these racist killer cops. Because we have moved well beyond systemic corruption and institutional racism with these police. The problem is this, they have no respect for our humanity. That's why we are not respectfully engaged, just like the people that were shot. There's a reason that there was no video, because the audio, because I was going to lie, man, it's racially, I'm afraid, I'm telling you, church. Why not this, I mean, giving the benefit of the doubt to say, he made me exercise his self... It's a difference. It's what... And he's not a liar. So there's a real...
But let's, I want to say, I do, I want the people, I want the community to be heard, so if you can limit your responses to two minutes, I do want to respect the man of God, how to do that, he opaque, and we on time limit too. So that's, two minutes or less if you respond, I need to go ahead.
I just wanted to say that the Center for Disease Control in nineteen ninety-two had two fifteen priorities published. One was the abuse of neglected children. The second was the violence and homicide rate of young black males. So we need to push for Congress to appropriate more funding to violence as a public health issue, and figure out a way, because you're talking about PTSD, you're talking about, uh, trauma and mental health situation for children and people in the sick. So we, we're talking about protracted and prolonged anger. And what does that do to people health-wise? You know, we already have, insofar as metrics, everything wrong with, it's high blood pressure, diabetes, go on and on and on. Now you got this, this prolonged PTSD, so we need to really push for further Congress, uh, congressional appropriations for violence in the public health.
The problem most of the time is, the fact that, the reason why this is so able to happen, is because of officers, there's no rep, there isn't a rep, um, uh, it's not, there's not a reputation of officers being made an example of us. Like, they're going to continue to do this because nobody is holding them accountable, because the law does not work for them. You know, um, I feel like Eddie Johnson is responsible, and we need to put pressure on him, because his judgment, his judgment keeps them in a position, whether they go on a paid vacation, or they get office duty. If we kill somebody, we go in the gym, no questions asked. Why isn't the law upheld, you know, why, why doesn't the police get the same? Why doesn't it apply to them?
That's what I'd like to know.
To me, that's the bigger thing, is like, if, if Jason Van Dyke is off, it's really sending, it's already a bad message. We already don't, you know, have that relationship with the police, where we can trust that they're going to do the right thing when they get behind us. Because there's such a long history of them killing us on camera, when we know they're guilty, when everybody knows they're guilty, and they get off. Nobody is being held accountable for this, so they're not going to continue to take us seriously, because they know it's a bonus tool. They know that there, it's a possibility, a strong one, that they're not going to be convicted for, so why not do it?
I want to make sure, Kenya, I want to keep that, my mental realness, so I want to, go ahead.
So, um, just hearing the opinions from everybody, I know that, of course, I want to say this, I was watching the live. And I watched the live, and the police, like, hit one of the girls with a gun. And he said something to her, and she jumped back at him, and she said, we sick, you know what I'm saying? We sick, and we tired of this. We tired of watching this over and over and over again, and that play, that's my mind, like, we really need healing. You know, I know this makes us angry, it makes us anxious, like you said, it makes us scared, it makes us fear this life, and I'm like, man. But how can we, you know, move on in life with, you know, with all these feelings? So the plan that we have is to start with therapy as a community, and also for individual therapy for people that need any individual counseling. So I pass out a note card, and anybody that would like any type of suggestions on what type of therapy session you would like to attend, will make sure that we have all type of counselors there. But I would be very in hand with there to specialize in trauma and community, and if anyone was trauma and community, to help us, to know what's happening, and ask us what that department is doing. So if you write it down, I guess I'll, I'll select it and then...
So Joseph, I want to ask you one question, and I want to hear your response. I was using that as a question, about how do you feel? Personally, my, my, probably the same, I feel scared, but not scared for my kids, you know, I got tired of it, and kind of with my son, I think about the life that he's living right now, and I think about him being older, and like, would he really have the options? And I think that's the biggest part of just being scared sometimes, but, you know, one recommendation that I would always recommend is that, uh, I think police need community services. I think they should have so many out there in the community, doesn't what I speak to, so they can have some type of relation before you just get hired, and not even work in a career that you're not even familiar with, you're scared to be in that community already. So it just, it just don't work out, so, um, you know, that's pretty much it.
That's really good, that's good.
I just wanted to add one comment on to something that we just had to go with that, was that, as long as there is a law, that police can always hide behind, and it's law, um, I felt threatened for my life. And as long as that law exists, they can use that in anything, after what the church, after what the nation, as long as the cop can say, I felt threatened for my life, until that law is dealt with, they're always going to get off in a court. They're always going to get off in a court.
So, turn around, is there anything that we can petition? We got, we do have, we, 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 is that somebody who specialized in, 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 is there something that we can use on legislative, uh, change that we're hoping to feel,
that we can use on legislative, change that, or only need to feel, or to feel, in front of law, use the voice, that is committed, you know, and you must have this.
So the, the two amendments that, when the officer, in case that's necessary, which is what attempted to do in California. The other thing that they did in California in response to the New York, uh, non-indictment of Eric Garner was changed it so that instead of having grand juries to look at whether or not they should indict and police involved shootings, they all had to be preliminary hearings that it was open to the public, so we don't have prosecutors going in and, uh, not trying and then saying, "Well, I couldn't get an indictment." So yes, there are legal maneuvers that we can make in order to, um, increase accountability, however, that begins with having politicians who care.
Okay, see, that's a tangible, so, I want us to think about tangible demands. I want, I want, hold on, hold on, I want, I want us to think about tangible demands, I see you said some problem on your next. See, things like that, talking, hey, and making sure that the officer, because Humphrey said it first, I've never seen none of those three white officers, I didn't see the shooting officer, but those officers that was approached that man, I've never seen them in our community. I've never seen them ever. And one of them, he said, Eddie said one of them was, uh, still on probation, that's just eighteen months. So why do you have a rookie cop in a happy area like that? All right? So we need, like, what Joseph said, we need, we need culture specificity and community service, now, that's a tangible ask slash demand you can put up, Eddie, right now, um, far as the intentions you can, is going to let the citizens be shadowed and, for, um...
Well, I see we need some voting.
Let us know your name, it's just...
My name is Martha, I'm from Atlanta, I'm a member of Texas, we just left for meeting for workers of pain, um, I have my grandson got killed, in two thousand sixteen, right around in Columbia. Okay. We need policy changes, because what you're saying, young lady, and Father Flagger, it was down to three words, police have a license to kill, that's what it is. They can get away with it, they have a license to kill, they can do it. And they been doing it, and they getting away with it. That's why we need policy changes, we need voting and whatnot, that's the only thing that's gonna change it.
Okay, cool, so, remember, remember, I want China, I want China, it's four pillars, it's four pillars I want us to organize on, it's four pillars I want us to these organize on. That's rights and legalization, right? That's sustainable demonstration, sustainable peace demonstration. If we just can't, if he get off, or whatever, we just can't be outside for a day. We have to be out there, we have to sustain that protest, how can we do that? Also, social and policy changes, where is the consent decree process, where are we with that? Where is the FOP contracts, where is, where are we with that? How many of y'all have read the FOP contract before? Danny Miller read that thing from the back, that's, that is how police deal, Chicago police deal with a lot of, if you know in the FOP contract, they says, they have seventy-two hours not to talk to an investigator after a police shooting. Not long, Jason Van Dyke had seventy-two hours not to be, he had, right, not to talk to an investigator, because it was in his FOP contract. And we are taxpayer citizens, we have a right to say that's wrong. Also, another thing that's not in the FOP contract, Dean Angelo was a former, um, FOP president, when Jason Van Dyke was indicted, they set a bond for one point five million dollars. Dean Angelo, the president of the union, solicited FOP donations. He asked the police to raise money to fund Jason Van Dyke out. Now, you could say that they assign, or whatever, but their primary resource of income comes from us. They took our money and borrowed Jason Van Dyke out. But if it's not in the FOP contract to say that's wrong, it's a lie. So this, these are the things I want us to think about, social and policy changes, right? That's how, look on, recall legislation before our elected officials go over account. That's what I want us to start thinking about, these are tangible acts and demands that we can make, if things do go south, we need, we need to make these demands and acts and rewards, but these are some acts and demands, it's just like, oh, I want to know if you can ask me to speak right now?
I just got one point to make.
Okay, I know, I know, I know, I'm gonna speak, you know, man.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Adam, I'm Bracy. I'm a longtime resident of the Auburn West community, and I'm also a community organizer, and associate with Action Now also. And my question, I'll sign it later, I do find out about community, but the question is this, why is it that there are so many Caucasian police officers in an all-black community? And if you're so afraid of black people, why assign them to our neighborhood? Are there no black police officers who are trained to deal with crime in the black community? We cannot send all, uh, black police officers to all-white neighborhoods, they beat up all of them, disrespect them, excessive force, or what have you. And I, put it on the record, I worked for Chicago Police Department and CHA Police Department, but combined together twenty-seven years. So I know there are not all bad police officers, there not all good people.
Amen.
But we need to weed out the bad ones. If there's an armful of complaints against them, five, three, four, five, four complaints against them, and they have in their record, that person should be, uh, reprimanded, re- reprimanded, and they are reprimanded. And then when there are, um, house arrests, that's what we call them, I work for, they strip them of their badge, and their guns, they're just like in a civilian city. But, they still get that little salary. Why? Why are you paid while you're here to hire investigation? Why? We're the citizens, you write all kinds of tickets against us, and our neighbor, to pay you for those, um, city, I'm a city citizen now, I fear for my life and I drive through my community. Because I'm afraid, even though I work, sometimes I use that, "I'm a former police dispatcher, I'm a former police dispatcher," so that they got my hands up, in my litigation. At my age, sixty-eight years old, grandmother, great-grandmother, I'm afraid of these police officers.
Amen.
They walk up to you, they use profanity.
Mm-hmm.
They have no respect for me. Put them in their neighborhood, this, they're counted. I'm not promoting racism, but if that's gonna keep me alive, they'll do it.
Amen.
One thing that people, that's a social and policy change that, that we can tend to work on, what people don't realize is when LaVance came out, and Loretta Lynch was still the A Chief, or for the, for the nation, and the Department of Justice included their report, what people don't realize, even though that they were in defiance, they stated that the Chicago Police Department was a racist institution, they said they have, uh, patterns and practices of, and of racial biases and constitutional violations, but see, this is what they, this is what people don't realize is, those same officers that was at the makeup of that report are supposed to be Chicago police officers. That's the, 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 the,[1370.14]
Ain't nobody reached any meeting, but ain't nobody bringing them young men and women TV and teaching them how to conduct themselves as young men and women when the officer approaches them. You know what I'm saying? And they out there, they traumatized because they shooting each other up every day. They, the spirit has been snatched out of the family, out of the unit. You see what I'm saying? We was raised, a lot of us was raised in church. What happened with us raising our kids in church or teaching them just the simple fact, "Our Father, which I have."
Right.
None. So you dealing with Trump, and they scared. So we gonna continue that, we still on the car dump, and they still getting shot. Because they don't, they have this training how to conduct yourself with an officer.
What's your name again?
My name is B and I, Black Knowledge and Intolerate.
Black Knowledge and Intolerate. You mean, you want to ask your name? I want to respect this, this is what's your name?
Why?
You make it real quick.
Make it real quick. The fundamental problem isn't that we don't know how to deal with the police. The fundamental problem is that the police do not know how to deal with us.
Amen.
It is not incumbent on us to do their training. It is their job when they initiate a stop, it is their job when they stop a car, it is their job when they arrest us. The fundamental problem is that the city of Chicago says, "We got a consent decree, we changed our training," and a year later, they're still shooting and they're still killing with impunity. That is a fundamental flaw in the training of the Chicago Police Department. Change the Chicago Police Department, we don't have this problem. And it is sad, and it saddens me to my core that kids think that they need to be trained how to deal with professionals, and the professionals don't think that they need to be trained on how to deal with our kids.
Amen. Amen.
You look at, and they talk about unity. If they unity, we have to use the magic first of all to get together. Of course, if together we stand and advise, we fall. If we don't unite on the day of the court, to go there and to bend this number, that's a first thing. And the number, we have to unite first. Because if you don't show them that we have, it's like one for all and all for one, if you don't show that, oh, they don't care about what's going on, or they don't want to unite, they get one of their neighbors and go down, look at all our neighbors, look at all the empty buildings, look at all the school, look at all the jobs that are out there. We want our people to have a better life, beautiful houses, you know, don't have to build a house. Put that in our system, that our children, they never write to us, write a wife. They never write, say, "I can go to this school." No, put the money back into our school, don't make that a lie. For this and that, it's not. We are our people. And they come out and go themselves, we are humble, ourself, you know? We are tired of letting this kill our families. My son was here, two thousand fifteen, God had, but yet when they hang, police got killed. Next minute, they knew, "Oh, you found, you killed him." But it's been over three years now, lots of them, the killer to myself, oh, it doesn't matter. It's like a lack of balance, right? But you know, the case is that, but we ain't gotta kill, but they killed, I'm saying.
Mm-hmm.
Think, you should mind.
Not only the hypocrisy and the double standard, dealing with the shootings and all that, but also put a list of the recent police corruption scandals. Because how can you say they're putting their lives on the line when, let's be friends, there's been a history of police officers who've been basically lining their pockets at public expense. And I say this as the son of a law enforcement official, he complains constantly about problems in law enforcement, how there's just a lot wrong. Trust me, get a few beers with him, he'll tell you why he hates the system. But another thing is, let's say Jason Van Dyke is declared innocent. This idea kind of comes out of what happened in South Korea and Armenia, and also solidarity in the eighties in Poland. Essentially, a combination of mass marches throughout the city, working with other organizations, our organization, Moms and Men, the whole, take it all. Not just marching through the map line, let's go through Edison Park and Metro City, or Mount Greve. And also, take places like, 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 here, the airports, the train stations, and just sit-down strike. And they can't move us until they need a list of demands.
That's good, and that's how it should be. That's good, that's good.
My question is, if we have police raiding the wrong house, I was watching on the news a couple of months ago when they raided Lady House, it was caught on camera, fast, that T V, and the police were like, "We ain't here for a day up there, walked out." The first man they was looking for, um, getting fined. I got, today I got to talk about the case with the police. I got to talk about this with the police, because he said, "I robbed somebody in the yard." I got to, right after I got up before, I got to talk about the case with the police. My husband, I'm not gonna give his name now, he's the police commander. I talked to him today, he just said he don't take care of it.
But, um, Nash, you say, you speak here, but Nash, I'm not gonna give it up.
Um, what I find that...
Now, hold on, Nash, one second. Hey, you know, we gonna wrap up in like, in like the next ten minutes. We gonna wrap up in the next ten minutes, I just want to make sure we all have some extra time to think what we need. Go ahead, Nash.
And I find that being one of those groups on the ground, it's the fact that we're not humanizing each other. The police are not humanizing us, and we're not humanizing them. There's a problem with respecting authority in our community, period. It's not, it's respecting the teachers, our kids aren't respected in authority, period. Anytime someone talks to one of these kids, it's aggressive, it's aggressive. We gotta teach our kids that everything is not, you're gonna go your way. Everything is not gonna be what you want to do, when you want to do it. We have to start respecting authority in our communities. Because I walk across America, and some of these places that I walk through, Indiana, Ohio, Pennsylvania, and Maryland, are some of the most racist places in America. And I didn't get my end word, a lot of this is what we bring to it, too. And we got to hold ourselves accountable, bro. At the end of the day, it's some people that, yeah, the police are killing us, but look at what we want doing ourselves, too.
Really?
And some of these are justified, because of what we're doing. Um, I'm not taking up no police officer if you wrong or wrong. I'm not even talking about this. If you have a FOI card, that doesn't give you the right to conceal and carry. That you have to wait, in order to carry, you really got to have your C C H. So let's stop, because what I find is, we get out, we protest and this and that, and we look at things, and we look at them in a biased way at times in our community. We wanna, we wanna put perfume on pieces of crap, you know what I'm saying? And we got to look at what we doing ourselves and our accountability, and then we can go against any force in America once we get our house together. We got to start with us.
I appreciate that, so I want us, I want us to make sure that we stay single-minded in about how we gonna respond to the law. That's why we have, I know it can, it can be a little bit of other stuff, but we have the law and how we gonna respond to the law, we have to.
So, just to be real quick, I think it's a great idea you would say, shutting down the bank, now, talking about... I think when we talk about history, and we see that history repeats itself, I think we just take on the same tactic that Dr. King led right up there, right? Why not boycott the police? Why not do, we gotta do what's right, right? We gotta hurt their pockets to make them listen to us, to make them realize that we are serious about what we're trying for, right? So I think, not just protesting for these, we need to, we need to, we gotta get on our ways. And that's really what I'm saying.
I really, I, I really have to pray about even bringing this up because I know as an activist, you know, the people want you to just be so fierce, want to just fight, fight, fight. But this situation is such a sensitive topic. As a leader in the community, I just want us to be conscious of what we're putting out for. I want us to always be mindful of what we're about to tell the people to do. When this is over with, I want us to be able to tell them or take responsibility for it. If something else happened and they respond how we responded as a response to this, are we gonna be willing, like, let's say, the city go up, it's a riot. We in charge of that riot, because we ain't it, because we the voices. Now, when something else in the hood happen, how we gonna tell the people to pull back? When we organized the riot, I don't want to be responsible for that. Now, we come to boycott it like buses and stuff like that, I'm so with shutting down their money. I don't want to be a part of a protest that turned up, one, because we don't have anything, but you can count me in anything that relates to affecting them economically. So that's, that's all I want to say is, like, I just want to make sure that the leaders are leading correctly, whatever plan that he come up with.
All right, so we got, we got, we can hear everybody, but this is to really alleviate any negative responses from the community, like what happened on Seventy-first Street. That's just one corridor in one neighborhood. Right, if you live in the city, two point seven million people, you're not gonna be able to control everybody's responses, which is, that's just reality. Well, we need to, like, if I'm influential on Seventy-first Street, I need to be able to vote there and just talk to those young guys and say, "Hey, if this, whatever this, how this is gonna make you feel, this is how we can respond, and that's what we need to do all across the city, and I encourage to do this brother, and this is the community powers." I don't expect this.
Hello, everyone, my name is Mason. I am the founder of A Low Beauty is Fitness. I'm a certified master, fitness trainer. I look at this situation in Millieville like the People's Rebellion, poor whites, slaves, blacks, they led a rebellion. You got people throughout the community, they go to the church for refuge. Now, why is it, the church is from the west side, church is from the south side, the church is from the north side, and the church is from the east side? Why they ain't never together?
Mm-hmm.
Why they ain't never marching together? We live in America where everybody root for the bad guy to win. Everybody root for the bad guy to win. Then you got the police, the only thing they understand is violence.
Mm-hmm.
That's the only thing they understand, and you hear the addicts, you know, maybe some have to die in order for those to live. My mentors through black history, like Stokely Carr, Michael, Matt Turner, Malcolm X, you know, Stop Singing, Star Swinging, all those names, or Alex, you were here to walk the line. But that's the only measure of hope for the police. You feel what I'm saying? And it's like, damn, okay, throughout history, this nation been about wars and been about battles. That's why we at the day, some was predicated on peace, and some was predicated on people putting their lives on the line. But then you got these churches, they constantly trying to take money from people and offerings. Where is this money going? You feel what I'm saying? Why is y'all asking the community for something that we already ain't got now?
Mm-hmm.
And why all these churches ain't never together up under one roof? They said they celebrate Yahweh, they celebrating Yeshua, Jesus Christ, whoever they claim the name they got. Why is they not unified all together? Why all these churches in Illinois or in Cook County ain't never together?
Amen.
Everybody got their own agenda, and that's sad. So it could be a lot of stuff going on outside, but why wasn't these same churches that's preaching that same Bible?
Mm-hmm.
These same prophets, they put their life up, why they ain't helping their brother? Why they ain't being there for, like, Jonathan was there for Daniel? I'm telling you, where all this stuff at?
And you know what's crazy? And my sister can attest to this, basically. I put a live video up saying the exact same thing that you're saying, the exact same thing to my brother Kenny. So what I want to do, is I share your frustration, because I go to a big church too, and we need to organize the churches. We need to go ask the pastors, you know, church up in the other side of this? You gonna come out and march with us? That's something that I'm holding you accountable with the Lord with me, that we're going to be together. We gonna go ask those pastors around here, which we're exactly right. Why was all the outside people outside?
I left, I left the gym, L.A. Fitness and Export Fitness, because these personal trainers had it in the gym. People dying and suffering from type two diabetes, sleep apnea, all that. I'm out here in the field, two, three in the morning, sometime five, six in the morning. These people waiting for the next iPhone, and they sleeping outside with tent. These leaders ain't hanging out no damn well, they in the house some damn well.
Mm-hmm.
That's true, that's true.
I mean, I understand that, but you know, this righteous indignation.
Amen.
You feel what I'm saying? I mean, I got kids too, but at the same time, you know, you gotta stop shutting these doors in, you know, house negro, field negro, oh, better him than me, oh, my son, my kid straight, they going to a private school, they going to a charter school. No, it shouldn't be that way. These leaders know where he going. They got their money accolade already, they sitting here, everybody ducking and dodging, bullshitting. But these leaders, I'm talking about, they always coming talking, talking, as far as millennials, they tired of hearing all this talking.
Amen, brother, let's talk about, you know, we swear, my sister, go ahead, we share, we know we're following, we share.
I'm honored, everybody here that spoke on tonight, and I just want us to reflect and continue to remember the pillars that's spoken, but also I want you to remember the passion that you have, everything that brought you here today. I would like to see us continue to have the meetings. I would like the meetings to be definitely organized, but also recorded, so that even the things that we're speaking about, we're actually being received, so that we can actually continue to be encouraged. Continue to do that throughout. I would like to actually see this happen throughout the city of Chicago. I live right here in O'Connell, I live right down the street. Uh, one thing that I guess you can be part of the pillar is the community from nation to nation. And the thing is, is that this dialogue is so important. We gotta continue to have this dialogue, and we gotta be able to strike that from the dialogue that we have. But then also, we have to begin to, like, there needs to be a peace treaty. See, and I work in, organizing, I work on the legislation side, I work in nonprofit, all of that, and guess what? You dealing with the mayor, you dealing with the Cook County, and guess what? There needs to be another internal investigation. There needs to be internal training. You need to bring people outside of any community, go inside and help train some of the officers. The reason why I say this, because I talk to officers, I talk to the people that's actually in those places that realize our system is corrupt, they need training. And some of you guys have already mentioned it, some of our youth really do need training, they need to know how to respond. So I would like to see the community relations to have, to continue to build. What I do encourage is that we respect everybody, because there's all these members in this one body. We have to understand that everybody has a piece. So if you're out there, and you're in the field, and you're doing organizing activism, you have to be just that, respectful to the one that's doing the paperwork and sending the proposal up to the mayor, or to, you know, that's doing legislation. So I would like us to continue to not lose conversation and continue to move out with strategic plans, so that union activists continue to plan, we can lead, and then you will call other people to come to it, versus trying to get, you know, you have to have a lot of answers, a lot of ideas, but it has to be a group or task for us to actually lead.
Asha, thank you, sister. Father Mike, you want to pray a prayer?
Yeah.
All right, let's pray a prayer, really, we all pray a prayer. Dear Father, we thank you for bringing us together to assemble in the name of Jesus God, to assemble for righteousness, to assemble for justice, to assemble, Father God, for accountability to what happened to the bombing of October twenty, two thousand and fourteen, Father God. We know, Father God, that you are the author and the finisher of our faith, God. You are the Alpha, you are the Omega, you are the beginning, and you are the end. You know what's going to happen before we knew, Father God. We thank you for preparing our hearts and preparing our minds, Father God, to continue this dialogue, this contingency plan, Father God, to prepare our beautiful, wonderful city, God, for what's to come in the name of Jesus, God. We ask you, God, to touch the judge's heart, God, in the name of Jesus, that he be fair and unbiased, God, in the name of Jesus, God, that he unseal all documents that the press are trying to give, Father God, make him more transparent, Father God, in the name of Jesus, God. We release forgiveness in that atmosphere right now, Father God, in the name of Jesus, for what Jason Van Dyke did to the bombing of, Father God. You said, "Forgive my enemies and bless those that resist us." In the name of Jesus, we release forgiveness, God, with both the love we can't hold, God, please hold, God, with the blood of Jesus, God. Give us imaginations, give us ideas, God, give us influence and impact, Father God, to go into the city of Chicago, God, to save souls and to save the lost, God. Let you give all the glory, God, let us be free so you can come, so you can increase, God, that our flesh die in the name of Jesus, God. Let our flesh die, God, in all the glory of this, that people of coastal worlds see what's going on in Chicago, Father God, in the immensity, Father God. Let your glory come on this city right now, we mind their hand and their mouth, in the name of Jesus, God. In Jesus' name, bless all of us as we go in the park, God, in Jesus' name, Father God, trial and mercy on each one of us, of our family, of our friends, and our loved ones with the blood of Jesus, God, in the crown of our heads, in the souls of our people. Go back into Father Mike, bless him by opening up his doors, bless his first contingency plan, Father God, let the city hear what's happening, Father God, and they be more involved with this process and this productive peace with dialogue about how to get justice for the poor. In Jesus' name, we ask these things, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Will. Thank you, Will.
Oh, the next, the next, the next, the next, it's gonna be the next two weeks, I keep every mind you posted.
There you have it. Um, the town hall meeting with Brother Will Callaway has just ended. I thank everybody for watching this live, and I will share the replay. It was wonderful. Thank you, everybody, for watching. Hope everybody will watch and share, and I will be posting it later on my YouTube channel, Roosevelt Sounds Off. Everybody, please go there and also subscribe, and hit that bell icon so you can get notifications. Peace.